Good morning. I call to order the January 28, 2020, meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weis.
Here.
Commissioner White.
I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where the public may speak on items that are not on today's agenda, limited to three minutes. Does anyone wish to address the commission?
Norman Mantle, Salina. For Thursday night's meeting, will the presenters have any papers that we can look at and follow along as they make their presentation? It would be more helpful for us that we could look at it and read it as they're talking so we know. Just the conversation is gone.
I'm certain they will, and defer to administrators, but I'm certain they will.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Mantle mentioned that to me, and I did speak with the architect about making sure that they have something.
On that same issue, the governor of Oklahoma just signed some papers. You're gonna not be putting, they're gonna let over 1,000 people out of jail, so we ain't gonna need a jail. Or an expansion, anyway. I can see. Okay. Another thing, you mentioned at a previous meeting, what are we gonna do about giving everybody a road when they want one? I want a new road.
We'll see what we can do about that. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission? Please state your name and address, please.
David Soper. I live at 3575 West Pleasant Hill Road. I came last year about the same time, and what reminded me to come again was, I just saw in the paper where you voted to buy $989,000 worth of rock. And you, I don't know if you remember, I was here last year. Just happened to be at the same time when you were doing the vote to buy the rock for last year. We didn't get any of it. And we've called a lot of times asking, you know, when's the grade you're gonna come? When are you gonna, it's always just, I mean, I know I'm complaining, but it's always the same story. Well, we'll get to you when we can. We do, you know, we're doing this, we're doing that. Well, yesterday I called, or my wife called, and she talked to, she tried to talk to Dennis, but he was gone out of the office. She finally got to talk to Ted Sears.
Mm-hmm.
And she just invited him. She said, would you please come out and look at our road? I didn't, I'd like to have you all come out to our house and look at our road on a day like today, but you probably wouldn't want to unless you got four-wheel drive. Well, Dennis came, or Ted came out yesterday, and he did agree with me, your road is in terrible shape. And we talked for an hour in our driveway, standing in our driveway. And he agreed, because I'd talked to the road operator guy before, and he said, yeah, it needs to, the ditches need cleaned, it needs crowned, and you know, it's lower in the middle than it is on the sides, and, well, you know, they tell me I can't do that and this and that, you know. But Dennis said, I'm gonna try to get you some rock out there today, which I don't know if you want it up, because, at least in front of ours, because it's like a mud pit. There is some ruts, I mean, like potholes, that deep right in front of our house, and then the water stands in them and just makes them worse. And I think the biggest problem is, I'd like to see the sheriff department or somebody come out there and sit one week and give everybody that lives west of there a ticket for going like 50 mile an hour down the road. It's posted 30 miles an hour. It's only, from Halsted to the next corner, it's only two miles. There's only like seven people live on that first mile by us. Up there, there's like 15 mailboxes, because I went up there and counted one day. Plus, there's some more that live around the corner and down. And everybody comes that way, and we, the two of us, we drive about 20 mile an hour down the road, because it is so rough. And like, this time of year, it is so muddy, she can't drive her car to work, or into town, because she's afraid she'll get stuck, so she drives in a four-wheel-drive Jeep. If you slip off the road, you're not gonna get back on in a car. And like, I'd say probably most of the people that live out there drive a four-wheel driver, an SUV, or a pickup, you know, but she drives like a front-wheel-drive van, and they don't go very good in there. I mean, you, there's times when your wheels are spinning trying to get up the hill to our house.
Mr. Chair.
And that's what I'm basically complaining about, and I've got some pictures, if you'd like to see them, what the road looks like. Last year, I offered to show you some pictures, you didn't wanna look at them. And last year, you promised me, you know, it, said the year before you had trouble with the company that was gonna haul the rock, their trucks broke down, and last year, you told me you got a new supplier and a new hauler, and you were getting it from some different quarries. We didn't get any of it.
Well, your points are very well taken, and I'm sure that we're making notes over here, and we will discuss this. I'm glad to hear that Ted was able to get out there and take a look at it. Obviously, we're not gonna dump rock out there today, I wouldn't guess, because, I mean, if you can't get down without four-wheel drive, we're not gonna send a dump truck loaded with rock down in it either.
Well, I'm not saying it has to be done today, but...
Yeah. And I, no, but you alluded to the fact that they said they would try to get out there today.
He said he was gonna really try as hard as he could.
If they can, they can. We'll certainly do that. And I don't look at your comments as a complaint, it's more of making us aware of it. And if we have stubbed our toe a little bit, we'll make sure that the people at the Road and Bridge are notified of this, and we'll get something done, so.
I know sometimes we don't get our paper, it's because probably the paper person can't get there. I've heard some people say sometimes the school bus doesn't go down the road because it can't go down the road.
Well, I don't get my paper either, and I live here in town, so.
Well, I know the paper story, so.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. I got a phone call from one of your neighbors this morning, so I'm a little bit of, I'm an hour ahead of everybody else on...
Well, I probably know who it was, because I talked, we talked to one of our neighbors yesterday for quite a length of while.
But anyway...
And a couple of my other neighbors.
I'm sorry, I had a question for you.
Okay.
Excuse me. Their complaint, and they thought that part of the problem why the road was so bad is because the culverts are gone and the ditches are gone.
Yeah.
Do you see that as a problem, too?
Well, we've only lived out there two and a half years, but they're basically, I'd say 90% of the road, there isn't any ditches.
Well, and then some of the people, I guess, had built and then had smoothed things out, so.
Well, I don't know about that, because...
We're not getting, I told them that I would drive out there this afternoon, so, and look at it at least, but that's what I hear, is just that it's gotten worse because there's no drainage, there's nowhere for the water to go, and then it goes over the road.
Well, and I think that's part of it.
Okay. I just wanted to know.
Last year, they did put a new tube down, one where they, it was plugged up, and they said they were gonna put a box in, but then they didn't. They put a tube back in, just like it did before, it was a low place there, and the water goes under the road. And they said the engineer said it was gonna, the tube was adequate size, I don't know, but, you know, I guess they didn't wanna put the box, because I'm sure it costs more money. But that's one of the places real bad, because it's low there, and it's always muddy and shady, you know, and that's, but what the, but the bad part is, the hills going up are the worst part. I mean, because, I don't know how many times you've been out on West Pleasant Hill Road, but that's why they call it, that there's a big hill, and then another big hill, and another big hill, and...
Your points are well taken, and we will...
One of my neighbors called it muddy hill instead of pleasant hill, so.
Okay, we're probably out of our time now, so we will...
I appreciate you. I mean, just like I said, we're complaining, but we'd like to hopefully get something done.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. And we'll start with the consent agenda. Are there any items that commissioners wish to pull from today's consent agenda? If not, we will approve the consent agenda. And we will move to item number one.
RFA number 121-20, AED grant. Bernie Botson, Deputy Director, Emergency Management.
Good morning, Bernie.
Good morning. The Dane Hansen Foundation has a small grant available for AEDs to replace and upgrade some of the existing units that are getting ready to clock out and are no longer going to be compliant with FDA regulations. Unfortunately, the grant was substantially less than, you know, we originally thought it might be, so we're going to have to reduce, if you gentlemen approve the grant, we're going to have to reduce the number of machines from, to about seven total. So we're gonna have to rethink that as far as distribution of them, but we can't, we are eligible for a $10,000 Dane, $10,000 Dane Hansen Foundation grant if you approve that, for the automatic defibrillators.
And I'm looking for, you have a comment?
I have a question. Of the cost per defibrillator?
I'd have to divide $10,000 by seven, but...
No. Oh, okay.
Okay, so it's...
So 10,000 will fully fund...
1,200 bucks a piece or something?
Yeah, $10,000 will get us about six or seven units, depending upon the manufacturer.
I didn't know if that was a matching type thing, or, and you are specing out the same equipment that the city currently SFD runs and the EMS?
We saw counsel with the Salina EMS, because they provide, as you know, the EMS for the entire county.
Right.
And what we're trying to do is eventually get our first responders, our fire guys, and the Salina Fire Department all in the same manufacturer, so the pads are compatible. So when a first responder goes there, say a Gypson first responder responds to someone, puts this, these pads on them, when the Salina Fire Department gets there with their ambulance, they can just disconnect the Gypson machine and put their equipment on there. It's compatible. And what we're striving for is interoperability.
Right. Okay.
Further questions or comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the Dane Hansen grant for AEDs as presented.
Second motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 121-20 for the AED grants. Further comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry. We will move to item number two.
RFA number 120-20, bid award for kitchen remodel. Rosie Walter, DOS Director.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Senior Services is requesting the low bid. We did receive three bids for the kitchen remodel, one from Wilson Group for $65,565. I believe they're from Missouri, not local. Compton was the high bid for $90,384, and Ponton Construction was $62,249. The scope of the work is just, we're going to totally take everything out of the kitchen, the walls, the ceiling, the floor, and redo everything, put in a new hand-washing sink, new stainless steel cabinetry, just a complete overhaul.
But not equipment?
Not equipment. We're going to keep most of the equipment that we have. We were able to get like a new Vulcan stove, our Vulcan that we have in our building just went out yesterday. Perfect timing.
Perfect timing.
But we were able to get with Sunflower, we purchased an older Vulcan for $1,600, so.
Have we started serving from the 4H building yet?
No. When the kitchen goes down, we're gonna move over to the 4H building, and I met with Rick today. We went through the 4H building, looked at the kitchen. February 10th, we're expecting that we could move right in. We'll move in over the weekend and get started with Meals on Wheels, February 10th. So we're letting all of our volunteers know where to pick up the food. Our staff will be there, the Aladdin staff that we contract to do, all the food will be there, so we're ready to go.
Don't we also have on the agenda some new bathrooms and things like that?
The commission already approved...
We've done that.
...the bathrooms.
And when is that, is that completed, or what's the process here?
No, we've actually gotten, the architect, Johnny was contract, contacted them, and we are starting with the bathrooms on the 10th of February.
So mainly will coincide with this project?
Yes.
That's good planning.
Yes.
That's what we wanna do, for the least amount of disruption. Are, is there any removal of walls or redesigning the kitchen?
No. We kept everything in the same spot, because you'd have to cut into that concrete floor and then rearrange all of that, and the cost was just astronomical. So we're putting everything pretty much where it was, improving it, though.
The kitchen is a functionable space.
It's a good space.
It was just very dated, and...
Wrong size sinks and...
Right. I think the sinks and the hand sinks were kind of a problem as time goes by, and the health rules and everything like that.
Infrastructure-wise, I mean, there's no plumbing that has to be removed or redone or anything like that?
Not in the kitchen. Not in the kitchen. We are going to remove all the flooring. It has asbestos in it, they did find that, so we're gonna have all that abated beforehand, and that was included in the, in this bid.
Rosie, these 75 days that they're wanting to do this in, is that 75 working days or 75 calendar days?
75 calendar days. It is our hope, though, that it will not take that long.
It does seem like a long time for that amount of space, but I'm not a contractor.
Yeah. And one thing is, you know, the bathrooms, they might take 75 days, but if the kitchen only takes 60 days, then we'll probably go ahead and we'll reopen everything, because they'll just be finishing the bathrooms. That's my, that's my hope.
Okay.
Rosie, are you just doing the kitchen floor, or are you doing the floor and the whole first?
No, just the kitchen floor.
Just the kitchen.
Just the kitchen floor. I'm going to, you know, when we're, before we open up, I wanna get the floor in the dining room polished, and, but it is asbestos, so I would have to have it all abated before I got into that. And then I didn't have enough funding. So, I mean, eventually, when we reapply for grants, I definitely would like to touch on that.
Then you're gonna be shutting down again.
Yeah. Yeah, but definitely won't be no 60 days.
I'm sorry?
Definitely won't be 60 days or 75 days. Hopefully, I could do it like...
And your dining customers have been made aware that...
Yeah, we've switched, we notified them that, you know, with the bathrooms being remodeled, that we were gonna be down. So everybody that we could, that ate in the dining room, that wanted to, we moved to Meals on Wheels. So our Meals on Wheels volunteers, we've had to split things up a little bit, because the routes are so big. You know, they're carrying more people. I mean, we're probably gonna have 200 people that we're delivering meals to, so our different volunteers will help out.
Well, that brings me to another point, then, if I, unless I misunderstood you, that to qualify for Meals on Wheels, you pretty much have to be a shut-in.
Well, I'm gonna say, to qualify for Meals on Wheels, you're usually, you are usually homebound, but we do have a lot of seniors that are congregate. You know, they eat under subsidized, and we don't want them to go without. So we definitely moved all of them that we could to Meals on Wheels. So typically, that's it. We're not gonna stop them from having meals, because they can get out, how's that? We want them to have that food.
Well, I think you're opening up a can of worms a little bit, because you're gonna, you could, how are you gonna turn one person down and not the next?
Well, I mean, they've already, they've already gone in, and they've met with the area agency on aging, and they've applied, and they've, and we've worked it out with the area agency on aging, to do this for the short time.
Okay, I'll let you deal with it. In respect to your comment, Jim, I assume you were just talking about the flooring, because it does say here they're gonna remove all the wall material.
You were, I just didn't know the scope of the project.
And the ceiling tiles and so forth.
In the kitchen.
In the kitchen only, yeah. There we go. All right. Any further comments from commissioners?
Yeah, Rosie, this number doesn't scare me, because I remember when you and I toured last year, and we got their original bid just for the cabinets, and the cabinets were more than this, just the cabinets.
No, I'm happy. I am happy.
So, which scared me then.
Yes.
And so I appreciate you going back there and sharpening the pencil and everything, because this is a, this is a realistic number for what you're doing, so.
And I wanna point it out here, that, and I don't know what the percentages are, but from a budgetary standpoint, that these expenses will be paid for foundation, by foundation grants that we've received, and private donations, and along with some Saline County capital improvement plan money. So I don't know what the percentages are. Do you have those off the top of your head?
I do. 42 goes under the foundation grants, 29 CIP, and 29 private donations.
Is that percentage or is that dollars?
Percentage. Percentage, yeah. That was the easiest way for me to do it, is just break it out, look at my total funding and break it out by percent.
Well, then we know exactly what it's really costing the county, you know, so.
Yes.
All right. Are there any public comment regarding this? Speak, and your name and address.
Debbie Soper, 3575 West Pleasant Hill Road. Perhaps we oughta just talk to the lady that we work with down at the center, but if you're having that many more meals to be delivered, we would gladly volunteer.
Oh, thank you.
Because like I said, we only do it a couple of times a year, and she has called us a couple of times to fill in a little bit, and we don't mind that, because we're retired.
Okay. Well, we'll call you. Suca.
Our route only has about 15 people, that's all.
Okay, you'll either, if you need to make a comment, you'll need to go to the microphone if...
Well, that's all you do, is about 15, and last year, we had three or four people on our route that passed away, and then they've gained a few more, and just the other day, I talked to one of them, they said, oh, it's back to about 15 again, so.
Yeah, our numbers are growing. I mean, they are higher.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they do.
All right, thank you.
It only takes you less than an hour to do 15 people.
Well, I appreciate you guys doing that. I do.
I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Ponton Construction in the amount of $62,249 for the senior services kitchen remodel.
Second motion.
It has been moved in second that we approve RFA 120-20, bid award for the kitchen remodel at the Department of Senior Services building. Is there any further comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion does carry.
Thank you.
We will move to item number three.
RFA number 122-20, resolution number 20-2287, Department of Senior Services Advisory Council member appointments. Rosie Walter, Department of Senior Services Director.
Okay, Rosie.
Okay. We have several changes on our board. Our advisory council has met, and we've gone through these, and here is our request. Senior Services requesting approval to reappoint Jeff Hart and Dave Freeland from February 2020 to expire February 2023. This is their second term. And then we are requesting that Mary Lou Odell, her position be filled, the rest of her remaining position be filled by Randall Helus, and he will start January 2020 to February 2021, and then we'll give him an option of re-upping if he wants.
Well, that option will have to come through us.
Well, yeah, no, we'll put it, no, no.
Just give me the option.
Yes.
Further comments? I've wrestled with this for a week now, since you brought this to us, because I know some others that have applied on their expression of interest, and in particular, our previous county administrator, Rita Deister. And I would really like to have seen Rita be appointed to this, but obviously, your board and the commission has seen otherwise, so I guess this would be a, if I were to vote against that portion of it, it'd become a two-portion vote, and we'd have to come back and do this all over again, so I'm not gonna muddy that water, knowing full well that it's gonna pass, whether I vote for it or not. So that's my comment, so I will. Are there any public comments regarding this appointment? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we appoint Randall Helus and reappoint Jeff Hart and David Freeland to the Department of Senior Services Advisory Council as requested.
Second motion.
Been moved in second that we approve RFA 122-20, resolution 20-2287, DOS Advisory Council member appointments. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. It does carry. Item number four.
Department of Senior Services update. Rosie Walter, Department of Senior Services Director.
Okay, Rosie.
All right. Our advisory council, our last meeting was October 11th. Actually, we just met last week on Friday. The discussion always on the subcommittees, we talk about the stats and anything new that we have going on. I've included the food service stats, so you can kinda see over the year where our numbers are. And we have added some different things, and we talked about even changing this further, just so we could have the totals on the end, so I will do that change, so we have a total for every, at the end, along with the average. So our numbers are pretty much, I mean, they range about the same. You can kinda go through and see, in the dining room, we've added the frozen meals, so you can kinda see that that average is about five. We didn't include that in the past, we did on the congregate, but not for people just coming in and getting a frozen meal. How's that? Okay, moving on to the financial for the year-end report. Total dollars that we received in from sales, $333,146 and $58. And then I list out our expenses. We're going to give approximately $35,156 and $44 back to the county, unexpended dollars. And then I kinda just put this last part on there, so you could just kinda see, from the commission on aging, how much you funded. You funded $328,480 back in 2017. That was what you allocated, the commission on aging. So if you take into account what our county allocation is, what our expenses are, using the unexpended, and then our revenue funds that we brought in, you are only expending, several years later, $10,136 and $98 over what you spent with the commission on aging. I just thought that was kind of a fun fact to look at. Donation...
Comments from commissioners?
One comment I'll make, that growth over a two-year period, is that what it is?
Mm-hmm.
So that represents a 3% growth over two years, which should average about 1.5% a year, so.
Be a lot less than $10,000 then? I mean...
Yeah, so I think that's well within inflation or whatever would be factored into that.
So our, Hannah, or Phil, do you have the 2020 budget in front of you? Or the, what is our allocation for 2020 for the senior services?
I've got about a $9,000 cut in my allocation for 2020.
Well, I mean, how much, what's the appropriated money? I mean, you've got a budget, and we give you, according to this, we've been giving you $700,000.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, well, I'm looking for that number for 2020.
It's 691,000. I don't have it exactly, but it's in that.
So, in theory, I mean, if I'm doing this right, if, let's just use 700,000, and it's bringing in 338, so it's costing us about $360,000 operationally, correct? Is, I'm just using around numbers.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Donation accounts. I've included on this page the different accounts that Department of Senior Services use. We have the exercise, the Meals on Wheels, senior services, and bingo. So this year, we brought in $103,407 and $32. So the total with the previous year is $192, $162, and $64, and we have expended a few of those dollars, partial on the remodel. So we're at $174,722 and $95.
Okay.
Okay, and then the...
When these donations come in, are, do they come into a general fund, or do some When these donations come in, are, do they come into a general fund, or do some people say, I want this money to be used for?
Meals on Wheels.
Either Meals on Wheels, or bingo, or whatever?
Yeah.
So, they, they do have an earmark to them, most of them?
Right, so if somebody comes in and they want to pay something for bingo, they're playing bingo, then our point-of-sale system will catalog that for bingo, so they pay for their cards or whatever for bingo, or they just send in a donation, they write Meals on Wheels on it, so they have that option to put Meals on Wheels or just senior services.
And then you have a, obviously, you must have a way of, of accounting for different donations in terms of those, those items, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I use the county accounting system to maintain that, and then I have QuickBooks, so, and then we balance every month, so we have, we know exactly.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? Anything from the administrative standpoint, side of it? Nothing? Okay. Anything else in your report, Rosie?
Yes, I have the building projects on the next page, and this just kind of gives you an outline of where we are at the time I put this together, so you have your expenses that have already been paid, first up above, you have your foundation grants, and I gave that a split, so you know exactly what it is, and then the expenses that we've paid to date, and then the expenses that are getting ready to come, the projections, and then remaining funds, so right now, if you look on the bottom, you'll see I have about $54,000 that's not allocated to anything right now, and I, I'm leaving that without moving forward on any other project, because I don't know when they cut into the floors in the bathrooms and the kitchen, if we're going to have any unexpected plumbing issues or other, but I'll keep you updated on that.
Okay.
Okay, on the last page, which is my miscellaneous items, we had a blood drive December 20th, Kansas Education Extension Office came in and we did schick, friend-to-friend, I think I've talked to you about that, we have, from Leadership Salina, where they've adopted out, I think right now we're at 12 seniors now that have been adopted out, and it's just people coming in, they fill in an application, if you want to adopt a senior, or not adopt, if you want to become their friend, a senior fills out an application, the friend fills out an application, and then we connect them too, so they meet at the senior center, they meet wherever, it can be as much as they want or as little as they want, it could be just cards, they could meet for lunch or dinner, they, their friend could take them on errands, so it's whatever they make of it, or they feel comfortable with. The Salina Emergency Aid Food Bank, I'm working with them to fill in the gaps for seniors with food, so we're doing the commodities right now, it's in the 260 for next month, we're just letting everybody know that if they have those gaps in their food, that they can come and fill in the application, and right now, unfortunately, we did get put on a waiting list with the Emergency Aid Food Bank, so, but we'll try to get that going again. Okay, we just had our annual evaluation with the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging, and I included that letter, we had a perfect eval, they went through and the center evaluation, and they check everything, they meet with staff, they meet with the contractual cooks, go through everything, but they did not have one finding, and if you remember last year, we did have several, nothing bad, but, you know, like the tornado things weren't posted, the maps and such, but yeah, we've taken care of everything, and we had a perfect eval. We did the Alzheimer's Walk, we ended up being the third largest team for Salina for their first ever walk, we raised about $1,800. We're getting ready for our health fair, so we're starting that now, I've already gotten a few phone calls, if you remember last year, we had about 42 different vendors that participated in that, so I'm expecting it's probably going to be a little bit bigger, my main concern with that is the space, but we'll see. We just finished, we're finishing up, still getting phone calls on distributing heaters, blankets, scarves, hats to seniors that need to, need that extra comfort or that warmth.
Very good.
One other thing I was going to tell you that I'm kind of excited about is that we're working with OCCK, they did call me, and they have additional grant dollars that they applied for, and they are going to help us get seniors to come to the senior center, they're going to go directly to their homes, pick them up, and bring them to the senior center, so, and if the senior can't afford that trip, then we will help them with that to a certain limit.
Interesting, and appreciated that OCCK would.
Mm-hmm.
You know, partner with us on that type of an endeavor, so.
Yes.
Sounds, sounds good. Any other comments from commissioners?
No.
If not, why?
Good job.
Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
And we will move to item number five.
2020 Celine County Annual Noxious Weed Management Plan, David Flattery II, Weed Supervisor, livestock and expo.
Good morning, David.
Morning, commissioners. So, this morning, I'm going to go over the 2020 Celine County Annual Noxious Weed Management Plan, this is a plan we have to turn into the state of Kansas once a year, here in two or three more weeks, I'll probably be back with a annual report, these numbers are basically based upon the annual report that we do, we have to go out twice a year and inspect 10 places, so we get kind of a, an estimated number, and then we go through and I'll make a different decision on some of them, because we're only surveying 10 areas through the state. So, we'll start with the county lands, musk thistle, we have an estimated acres of six acres, treatment methods, 240 amine, picloram, 240 ampicloram, 240 and dicamba, and off to the side there, if you see, you know, 240 we can spray from mid-March through April, it's usually the best time, other weeds are coming up too, so that'll get with them. Bind weed, we have an estimated acres, 120 acres, which I'm pretty sure that total's a little bit higher by now. Treatment methods, we have 240 amine, 240 in dicamba, 240 in picloram, Johnson grass, we have an estimated acres of 55 acres, treatment methods are glyphosate and plateau, and then we can also mix those two. City areas, estimated acres on musk thistle is 2 acres, treatment methods, 240, 240 and dicamba, bind weed, we have an estimated acres of 21 acres, and through the city, and the treatments, 240, 240 and dicamba. Johnson grass, we have an estimated of 4 acres, the treatment on that's usually the glyphosate in town.
David, under the heading of cities, I mean, are you talking aceria gypsum, or does that include the city of Salina also, or?
It does include the city of Salina, and when you get to private, private lands, that is, city of Salina owned homes too, so.
Okay.
So, the private lands, musk thistle, we have an estimated acres, 5,300, the treatments are listed as stated, 240, picloram, 240 ampicloram, 240 and dicamba, and then we go to bind weed, estimated acres, 7,900, treatment methods for that, 240, 240 and dicamba, 240 and picloram, Johnson grass, again, estimated, private lands is 100 acres, treatment method is the glyphosate. Cerise lespadiza, we don't have a whole lot of that, but it is in our county, and it is on private lands too, the estimated acres is 24 acres, treatment method is 240 and remedy mixed. Federal lands, estimated acres is 100 acres, treatment method is picloram, and picloram and 240 mix. Bind weed, estimated acres is 80, treatment on federal land, 240 amine and picloram, Johnson grass, an estimated acres is 30, treatment method is glyphosate and plateau. Weed control properties and enforcement, we will continue with a 10-ounce rate of picloram and 240 amine for the spring, and also a 10-ounce rate of picloram for the fall application, as long as it's not in the same area. A 10-ounce per acre rate has shown a significant decrease in musk thistle population. Bind weed will continue to sell up to five gallons of glyphosate for producers who wish to use it, this way the glyphosate is actually going on areas that need to be used. Johnson grass, Johnson grass is not a major problem, there is quite a bit, but not a major problem yet in Celine County, the areas that it affected are somewhat sensitive areas, for that reason, the glyphosate's primary chemical that can be used, so we have to treat it at the right time. Vegetation management program, brush control, we're still work pretty closely with the road and bridge department, we implemented the iPass to show the brush locations. Common weed control, continue using spray trucks along county rightaways to control general and noxious weeds. Intersections, we do a 300-foot site plan, so we continue to control the plan for that, this project provides the county less of a liability of concern, I mean, you come up to a stop sign, you won't be able to see it clearly. Chemical mowing, we maintain chemical mowing along all paved roads, it has showed remarkable decrease in bind weed along roadside. Mechanical mowing, the noxious weed department works very closely with road and bridge department to control plant growth via mowing both safety and eye-pleasing of the road rightaways. Bear ground program, this is done around the signs and guardrails throughout the counties, it's basically, we won't leave much weeds or nothing around the signs, usually I try to go out about 5, 10 feet with the bare ground. On the outreach side of it, the media, we work with county agents on preparing the extensions newsletters during the year, also use, utilize local newspaper and radio to explain about noxious weeds. Meetings, arrange information meetings with leaseholders, which they'll either come to the office, or we go out to their place. Demonstration plots, we work with K-State Biocontrol demonstration plots on that. Literature and information, we provide information and literature through mass mailings to over 500 producers at least twice during the year, these mailings are to inform them of noxious weeds and treatments needed to control. Also work pretty closely with one of our ag spray, and every fall they send out information to, so. Survey program, the survey is done two times throughout the year during the months of May and October, this gives us a good idea of any control that has taken place with noxious weed, it is performed two separate times over, two separate times because of different cropping systems. Survey areas are good overview, as there are sections within the city limits, as well as farm ground, data is collected and aerial photos, aerial photos are filed with data collection information for future references, these surveys are used to check for increases and/or decreases in noxious weed in the certain areas, and that's basically where we get the estimated acres is through them surveys. The facility and equipment, spray equipment is kept inside a locked area at the Expo Center, equipment includes a 1995 one-ton four-wheel-drive truck with a Raven Spray monitor, 400-gallon tank and a boom buster roadside nozzle, a 2005 3/4-ton Dodge Ram pickup with a 300-gallon slide-in tank primarily used for Johnson grass, a 1999 International with a 2,600-gallon tank and boom buster nozzles for the rightaway applications, a 2009 Kenworth with a 1,600-gallon tank equipped with boom buster, boom buster nozzles for the rightaway applications, we also have two 2016 Kawasaki mules, both of them are now with 125-gallon tanks, and we, those are both used in pastures to go through and do the inspections, and if we have areas we can't get to with the big spray trucks, we could take the mules down and spray them. Personnel department, we have three permanent employees, myself, the weed supervisor, 9A and 6 certified, Jason Bell, chemical applicator, 9A, 6 certified, and Beverly Mullen, the administrative assistant, 9A certified, she also is the administrative assistant on the Expo Center side. And under employees too, we also have two Expo Center employees, one of them has both, is both 9A and 6 certified, and that's Jeremy Bowman, and then we have Scott Crable, which is 9A certified, but we do get help from all, all the Expo employees if we do need it, as long as Rick's not using them at that time. Training and professional development, my staff and I will, will stay updated by fulfilling the recertification requirements for our certified pesticide license by attending district meetings, the annual conference, and meetings provided by the chemical representatives. We provide professional publications which are available to the entire staff for reference, the Celine County has kept abreast of new products and practices which help us to further educate the public for noxious weed control. Safety training is provided through the county on machinery and equipment, in-house spray equipment training and maintenance was started back in 2002, and will be ongoing yearly project. In 2016, all employees participated in a defensive driving course provided by K-Work, also certain employees were certified on forklift training presented by K-Work. Public relations, in 1998, the Celine County Noxious Weed Department made accessing the public a majority priority, this included meeting with people one-on-one or in our office, or at their farm or place of business. Personal contacts over the telephone have been successful, by doing this, we're able to understand the people, the people we deal with in our community and give them a sense of helpfulness and a place that they can go for honest answers concerning their weed There was never more, there was never more apparent than when a local, local dealer has been pushing the cost share program, we had many calls from area landowners asking us what this program was really about, knowing we would open and be honest with them, which is in Celine County Weed Department, is the only way to conduct, conduct business as a public entity, this we continue to do with great success, and 2002, Celine County Weed Department started helping county residents with their spray equipment questions, problems, not only does this give them a place to get help, but also maintains a good environmental practice by having properly calibrated equipment, putting on the proper amount of chemical. And that is all I have.
Well, that was quite a bit, actually.
It is.
Thank you, David, I've got a question regarding private lands and federal lands, and our obligation as a county to, to, are we invited to go there to take care of the issue, or are we obligated by law to go onto private lands that may have some of these issues, how, how does that work?
We are actually obligated by the state law to go on to their land, now, we have to try to, they are getting ready to implement that, we have to try stronger to notify the person before we go on, the state's notification of somebody as a landowner is, if you try to call them, they don't answer, or if you go up to their, their fence line, and you just say, hey, I'm going in to check this pasture, there's a very fine line between that, but we are obligated to go on their property, and it is a state law that we can go.
And if you go on to somebody's 80 acres or 120 acres, whatever it is, of pasture, and it's, and it's full of musk, musk thistle, and you begin the spraying process or whatever, I mean, do you talk to those people first and say, do you have a plan to?
Right, right, we don't spray right away, I mean, normally, normally, we start off with a phone call, and we try to call them, we give them maximum days to take care of the problem, if a phone call doesn't work, they don't take care of the problem, and then we'll send out a, what we call a certified letter to them, it is a form that we get through the state that we fill out, there is steps we have to take, and sometimes by the time you get to the final step, it's pretty much too late, the seeds have already seeded out, but in that situation, I do continue on throughout the year with it, we try to get them signed up for a fall spray or spring spray through an ag company that does spraying, and if they get signed up, then we are able to back off of them.
Well, if we have to go in and we do the spraying, do, is there a charge for that, or do we just do that as an obligation to the county?
No, sir, there is a charge, there's a paper that we have to fill out, and how much chemicals put down, how, how many man-hours, how much equipment was used, and then we have to turn all that stuff back into the state too, but, and my, being here 2016 as the weed department supervisor, I've never had to do that.
Well, that's encouraging, so.
We do every now and then, I mean, if somebody has a pretty heavy infested area, we will come out and help them, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty good at that, well, Jason and I will go right through their pasture, chop the thistles down, and.
All righty, other questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, why? Thank you for your detailed report.
Thank you, have a good one.
All right, we'll move on to. All right. We'll move on to item number six.
Resolution 20-2286, Salina Community Economic Development Organization member, Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning, Philip. But before we move on, I need to go, I need to back up here and correct something that we do need to approve. Evidently, I didn't know we needed to approve weed management plan, but it, it says that we do. So I would take a motion to approve that plan.
I missed that also, Mr. Chair. So I move, we approve by signature the 2020 Celine County Annual Noxious Weed Management Plan as presented.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve by signature the 2020 Celine County Annual Noxious Weed Management Plan as presented. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. We'll sign it for you, David. Thank you very much again. Now we'll move to, to Mr. Smith Haynes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As one of the four organizations that have founded the Community Economic Development Organization, the Board of County Commissioners has two appointments to that board. One of those appointments is up this, end of this month. And so last week, your commission reviewed the expression of interest forms that we had on file, and I have prepared a resolution to reappoint Mr. Lloyd Davidson. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Davidson is, has a long history in Celine County as a banker, business owner, a person that's strong for economic development, and very knowledgeable of money and facts and, and development and so forth. And I would certainly support his reappointment to this position. Other comments from commissioners? Any public comment? If not, I will take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we reappoint Lloyd Davidson to the Salina Community Economic Development Organization for a term of three years.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 20-2286, Salina Community Economic Development Organization member to appoint Mr. Lloyd Davidson. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. It does pass. We'll move to item number seven.
County administrators update.
Good morning, Philip.
Good morning again. Just a few items for this morning. I've attended several meetings over the past week, starting with the New Cambria City Council. Talked to them a little bit about our upcoming jail meeting. Went to Local Government Day in Topeka. Won't go into that a lot because I think the chair has some additional comments on that, but I did attach a flyer that KAC handed out on the dark store theory, just to make sure all the commissioners were in the loop on that. Attended a chamber board meeting and a business after hours, advisory boards for both community corrections and senior services. And this morning, we had our Dutch breakfast. Upcoming events, I am scheduled to be on friendly fire this Thursday morning, so if you all want to listen in to my scintillating exposition on county government. And most importantly, a reminder that this Thursday at 7:00 PM up at the former St. John's campus, we have our next meeting on the Jail Project Town Hall. Members of the public are invited. Finally, I will just note that we have received a letter from the state on appointment of non-attorney members to the Judicial Nominating Committee for the 28th District. And so both of those folks are interested in serving again. We'll just put that on next week's consent calendar unless there's reason not to do that.
All right. Thank you for the update. Any questions from commissioners? If not, we'll move on. And I will report on Local Government Day 2020, which was held last Wednesday in Topeka at the Capitol Plaza Inn. I would also like to mention that Assistant Deputy Administrator Hannah Stanbaugh also attended the meeting along with Philip and myself. It was attended by nearly 300 city, county, and other elected officials. Approximately 50 counties were represented. The legislative start is being dominated by a couple of bills in particular, and that is Medicaid expansion and abortion bills. Part of the Medicaid expansion would include a section covering inmates housed at county jails, and I find that very interesting. The, the section would relieve counties of much of the health-related costs that they now incur, and that would be huge for Celine County if, if that does go through and they, they pass that along. Governor Kelly kicked off this session with numerous remarks, and, and her highlights included some of the things we just talked about, Medicaid expansion, broadband coverage, rural prosperity, roads and bridges, the state tax structure, the tax system in general. She also wants to look at property tax relief in particular, will be a priority, and the LAVTR, which is the, explain that, it's a local
Local Advalorem Tax Reduction.
Tax repeal, tax reform.
Tax reduction.
Reduction. That's being proposed. So again, those types of things that, everything she's talking is music to our ears. She wants to return more control back to local government, and I, I take this to a degree with the, with a grain of salt. She was speaking mainly to local officials, so she wants to play to that music to that band. But I, I was very encouraged by her remarks. Other elected presenters included Representatives Blaine Finch from Ottawa, Pam Curtis, who represents Wyandotte County, and Senator Jeff Longbine from Emporia. They all participated. All three advocated for more control to be returned to local government. They are all three, amazingly, get this, they are, they favor a repeal of the tax lid. And again, that's pretty, pretty huge for, for our county. Representative Curtis called for some sort of a tax lid repeal, and wanted to study it more and perhaps model the tax lid after a Utah model. So she wasn't quite as, as sympathetic as the other two were. Senator Longbine and Representative Finch both said, get rid of the tax lid. Representative Finch also pointed out that about 60% of last year's tax increase was tied to school funding. Finch also wants to revisit the tax bill. Criminal justice reform is a main point. Finch and Senator Longbine both advocated granting more dollars for mental health. They recognize the pressure being put on Larnard and Osawatomi State Hospitals and thinks more state hospitals are needed. And I, I find that also interesting, which would relieve some of our pressures in our jails. Dark stores are becoming a real issue for local governments, and we really need to keep a close eye on that, that from our taxation standpoint. The makeup of the state tax appeals board is under fire and in question. I believe one or two positions are up for renewal, and legislators are keeping a close eye on these appointments and the backgrounds of those, those types of people. KAC, which is the Kansas Association of Counties, members voiced their opposition to the makeup of the state Board of Tax Appeals for the reasons that I just mentioned. Following on Thursday, I was at the KAC governing board for most of the day, and I'll just hit on some real highlights here for the KAC 2020 legislative priorities. They are in favor of constitutional home rule, property tax lid, tax valuation and appeals, Medicaid expansion, mental health and jails, state funding, broadband access, and federal taxes. So those are the high points that, that took me a couple of days to, to hear all of that, and, and was well worth my while. I appreciated very much the opportunity to go and serve on the, the KAC board in addition to listening to the, the governor and, and the legislators on, on the things that they commented about. Commissioner Weiss, I'd ask you to report on, on last week, on your meeting at the, at the senior services, but it sounds like Rosie pretty well covered everything, so.
She really did. I, I will make a couple remarks. I, there was some conversation about the makeup of the advisory board, and, and I would like to say that all those people are very committed, and to have the problem of great candidates wanting to set up and serve on these advisory boards is a, a great problem to have. So it speaks very well for the community. Also on her, her report, we are in our second full year of, of the Department of Senior Services being under our umbrella, and, and it seems to be working very smooth. It's, it's doing what we hoped it would. We're keeping expenses in check. The director seems to be doing a very good job of finding, funding sources, donations and whatever. The advisory board is, actually, they have a subcommittee which meets monthly, and I think all but three of the advisory board members are on the subcommittees. So I think I'll start setting in on the subcommittees because a lot of business is taking place at that time, so. But I don't want to, I mean, her report pretty much touched on everything, and, and things are going smooth there.
Okay, good. Thank you. Commissioner Sparks, I know you attended the community corrections last week. Is there anything you report from that end of it?
The one thing that I would comment is, is that if people really would benefit from going to this meeting this Thursday night on the jail, because there's a lot of, a lot of things were brought up in that as to the percentage of recidivism and, and all the other programs that the community, community corrections is providing to the community at this time, and what's working, what's not. So it was a very, very, a lot of great information, and I would really think that would benefit a lot of the public out there to come to the jail committee, meeting on Thursday night.
To, to, just to solidify that a little bit, that is at St. John's, the old St. John's Military School, which is the St. John's, St. Francis Ministries campus on, on, at the end of North Santa Fe. And that meeting will be a town hall meeting, open to everyone at 7:00 PM. Is there anything you can add to that, or have we covered it?
I think you've basically covered it. The official address, I think, is 110 West Otis. It's in what's called the Stevens Center, which is sort of the cafeteria area.
I don't want to misspeak, but potentially, I think, aren't they supposed to reveal some preliminary plans? Is that on the agenda?
So, yeah, the structure will be, for, for members of the public who might have attended the meeting in December, the structure this time will be slightly different. There will be some introductory comments from the architect and our jail population consultant. And then after that, we're going to do a little bit of a breakout. So there will be three, or depending on how many folks we have, potentially six stations, and folks can go look at some different options and then kind of rotate around over a period of time.
Very good. We hope everyone can attend. So are there any other comments or from commissioners? If not, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second for adjournment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. We'll have a short, short study session following. Thank you.